Good morning and welcome to the standing committees meeting for Wednesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Council members are encouraging virtual public participation as there is limited seating in council chambers due to the number of COVID- nineteen infections in our area. All meetings will be live streamed on the city website and the city's City of Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Our first order of business is roll call.
I'll take it. Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross, Mr. Crowls, Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Hill Smith?
Yeah.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Hoover, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate, two thousand and twenty-four. Dr. Ron Lynn Miller at, Dr. Ron Lynn Miller one Twitter. In the early two thousands, I became a member of the Association for Asian Studies. At the University of Oxford, I was part of St. Anthony's College and the Institute of Japanese Studies. March twenty twenty-two is Asian Intelligence Month, GIS sponsored. I and the GIS are seeking a link with Tashkent, the capital city of Uzbekistan. Concerns of council include love of the city, God, and hagiography of Mr. Ganey. Council concern, love of the city. Mr. Ganey on twenty-two February two thousand and twenty-two said, I love this city during a proclamation commentary. I contacted him via email to ask him what he meant by that, but no answer. If Ganey loves the democracy of the city, why does he not support vote by voter verification? If Ganey loves Pittsburgh, why does he not say, let's prosecute the Roman Catholic priests who have raped our children? If Ganey loves Pittsburghers, why not seek to get hazmat suits for us, beginning with children? If Ganey loves us, then why does he not stay in the room? And when he's around, he has been, to listen to citizens during public comment? Council concern, God. Mr. Ganey, supported by this council, so it's a concern of this council, twenty-two February two thousand and twenty-two, God bless you, Godspeed. Religion, core concept, ultimacy, and in many religions, God refers to an ultimate superbeing. To what ultimate God does Mr. Ganey, or you, when you do this, refer? Shiva, Allah? Number two. How does the focus on God relate to followers of Taoism and Buddhism in the city? How do they link with Mr. Ganey's and council's connection to this undefined God, since there's no superbeing in Taoism or Buddhism, but only the universe is ultimate? I view this as divisive. The expression, God bless you, is an imperative. Who do you think, who does he think he is to order God to bless us?
Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonner. We, the people of Bonner, have significant investment into our properties. We stand to lose significant value financially and quality of life reduction. The largest investment that the average American will make is in their home. Our biggest assets are being threatened. This is why we, the community, have expressed significant concern about the potential development of Bonner School into anything other than a green space. We already had a valuable school stolen from our community. We deserve a valuable green space to replace it. Reparations are due. The Pennsylvania Constitution states under political powers that all power is inherent in the people and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Negligent infliction of emotional distress and blockbusting are being perpetrated by those who oppose our community. Real damages are occurring to the Bonner community. I have no doubt that this controversy was a contributing factor to the demise of my husband. The PPS created this controversy against we, the property owners of Bonner. My husband did his duty to promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the people he served. Will you, as elected public servants, do your duty to help the people of Bonner? My husband, Michael, was duty-bound his entire adult life. He completed his mission on earth well. He is now one of the watchers and helping in the spiritual realm. He is still a force with us. Neighbor wrote, I think one of the best ways we will honor him is to keep fighting for Bonner and be kind to our neighbors. We will commit to that, I promise. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonner. Michael Mullen, Memorial, Green Space.
Our next speaker is Ikona Halmaokina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikona Halmaokina, the spokeswoman for Indigenous People in the Delaware Territory, now known as the City of Pittsburgh for the past two hundred-plus years. I regret not being able to join you in city council chambers today, but the snow kept me inside. However, we all know that undoubtedly the sun will return, and so will the children to the Larmor Park that was recently built. During a recent visit to this park, I discovered, along with many other concerned parents, that there were safety concerns surrounding the design of and the infrastructure of the park. Reverend Ricky Burgess, this is your district, and so I am bringing these concerns to your attention. And there are a lot of other people who don't know how to activate their voices to bring these concerns to you directly, and so I am being a voice for the people who have been silent. Upon my approach, I immediately saw an exposed partial, partially exposed pipe throughout the entrance of the park, along the unsightly trash riddle brush. But this wouldn't be the worst of my discoveries. It was a dangerous slide that my two-year-old son excitedly climbed as I followed behind him to discover spaces where children could fall from, and one space standing roughly eight feet tall could possibly injure or seriously injure or kill a child. I took pictures, but nothing will help you understand the immediate danger children are in, other than an in-person visit for yourself. Among these other concerns is lighting. There were approximately a dozen or so lights out, which is a public safety hazard. Speed bumps, people speeding, were other concerns that residents who live adjacent to the park wanted you to know about. Lack of activity and programming for the older children who also attend the park, very little to do. A shelter for summer cookouts, as most other parks have. Nearby residents are also concerned about noise pollution and the development across the street from the park. Well, public housing wants to do it. One of the residents stated to me that she pays twelve hundred dollars a month to deal with people who still have a project mentality, and so she's kept up with loud music and the smell of drugs in her hallway. These are just a few of the concerns of members of your district, Reverend Councilman Burgess. And I would love to sit down with you and discuss some of these things and ways that we can improve them. We want to be an ally with you, Reverend Ricky Burgess, to empower people to use their voices and encourage them to speak out and speak up. We envision this city for all, and we want, as Indigenous people, to make sure that we are in that, included in that narrative of a city for all. We're looking forward to speaking with you soon, and I thank you for listening to my concerns and hearing my voice today. In Makai Alakain, which means the light in me honors the light in you, peace, light, and love, and I yield the rest of my time.
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward. You will be given, state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District up at Cagney, where it harvest tires, up at the top of that. I believe that when you hear something, you forget it, but if you see it, you can remember it, and if you know, you know. I wanted to cite Mrs. Strasburg, even though I've said some things that really, I wanted to be brought to the attention that this councilwoman came yesterday and said, congratulations on Women's, National Women's History Week. And I found out it's now been expanded to a month. The reason why I come down is because I still want you to understand, you can never understand what I'm going through, not unless you live in the neighborhood, and if you don't know, I should be able to come down and tell you. Now, last, I was fussing the other day about Crofts. When I brought in a petition about shop and save, I brought in the petition, but when I went to speak as a sponsor, he wouldn't let me be a sponsor. He gave me three minutes, but people in the community spoke out. Now, the citizen Sue Edders says, we have a right to at least five minutes, sponsors only, at least five minutes. Okay, this is during public comment. Now, Sue Ecklers is a blind woman who says I had a right to five minutes. She does not use her sight. Instead, she uses her hearing, and she has a keen sense of hearing for the job that she does and also listening to city council. I only got three minutes. Okay, I have the letter from, I have my letter that's telling me that I, that they had my petition, but I still couldn't be a sponsor. Another thing I want you is to realize this, that the time I was speaking to the children, I turned my head, he said, Crofts is hollering, me, this is round hollering and screaming at me. That my grandchildren, as I said, watched city council every day, every time they had a chance. This is my grandbaby, and they say, oh, he's hollering at grandma. She was about two years old. That's the one that's five, was five when she came in here, and Mr. Burgess said, it's not the time and the place for her to speak here, but we can bring babies. Now, my residents saw this show yesterday with O'Connor with his baby, and they saying, what kind of business is you running that you can bring babies and make a big deal over the babies, not the proper people that are getting the proclamations?
Thank you.
And I'm going, thank you.
Are there any other speakers with us in chambers and/or line, online, excuse me? Seeing none, that moves us to our standing committee agenda. Let the record reflect, we've also been joined by Councilman Crowe and Councilwoman Deborah Gross. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law Chair by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill one thirty-eight.
Bill one thirty-eight, Resolution Providing for the Sell of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sale Item A through C, twenty-five fourteen Park Hill, ten eighteen Marina, and one thirty-eight Wabash.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is recommended. That takes us to our new papers, Bill one fifty-four.
Bill one fifty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Law and/or the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city in full and final settlement related to the litigation at the city versus the Purdue Palmer Farmer, as coordinated in reference to the opioid litigation stemming from national prescription opioid litigation in the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of Ohio initially, as to the defendants, McKeeson Corporation, Cardinal Health, Inc., and AmerisourceBergen Corporation, Johnson and Johnson, Jansen Pharmaceuticals, OrthoMcNeil Pharmaceuticals, and Jansen Pharmaka, and any further settling defendants to accept a yearly allocation of funds into a special revenue account to be subsequently created to accept the funds of this settlement as determined by the Pennsylvania Interstate Opioid Trust and Allocation Order.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill be held for executive session. Bill one fifty-seven.
Bill one fifty-seven, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the City Code, Title II, Fiscal Article One Administration, Chapter two nineteen Operating Budget, by adding a new section two nineteen oh eight entitled Legal Requirements in Preparation of Operating Budget.
Prove.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill is recommended. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
Second discussion?
Discussion.
Um, just want to state that I'm super supportive of the Manchester, you know, Citizens Corporation and everything they're doing. I just wanted to know about the way we're going about this. So I have down here like six thousand for consultant. Is this, is this the, the, do we increase this to ten thousand recently, the limit?
Yeah.
But I'm sorry, we increased this to ten, if we have an interrogative, I can't remember. We increased this to ten thousand, the amounts that we can approve on here? Under, under planning?
No, no, we did not. It should, that should be, that amount should be waived. It's, we have a five thousand dollar limit. No organic use.
Thanks, Bill. I just want to say, like, I don't have anything against this project. I just want to make sure that we don't do anything, you know, that we can't do right now. So.
Are you making a motion to waive the rules so this can be approved, or?
I mean, we have the ability to pass. I mean, is this on, it seems like it's just over the five. So I just want to make sure that, you know, is this just tacking on to a contractor where we have, is city planning available to explain what's going on here?
I mean, I know, I know what the project is, if you want me to explain the project itself.
I'm familiar with the project too. I just.
You do have the ability, our rules state that it has to be five thousand or under. We waived the rules, we do have the ability to then also approve this.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to be a jerk about this. I just, you know, I just feel bad, you know, because now I want to jeopardize something that's.
I don't want you to be a jerk either, but I don't think we should be passing things that come like this without some discussion.
Man, I just don't know how it makes it on. I just don't understand, like, so we have the power to, if it doesn't mean five, I just, I just wish that in the future, we wouldn't have like this even included. Isn't there some?
I mean, we, we've done it numerous times in the past.
Okay.
We waived the rules to approve an invoice that was above the five thousand dollar amount. If you would like, you can make a motion to delete this item and then get further clarification from planning.
I don't want to hold up the project. This, I just, um, I don't want to hold the project. So I'm not gonna, I just want to bring like to that. So in the future, it'd be good, just in the future, if the, if the department's gonna do this, then I'd like to be, I'd like to understand why they're doing that.
Still need a motion to waive.
I actually have comments first. I want to hear from the parliamentarian or from somebody, but this is okay to do at this point.
Okay. Still need a motion to, aye?
No, I, because you know what, this is, this shouldn't even be coming over until we have it approved. And that's one of the reasons I'm glad we're working on this, this whole process.
But that's up to Mr. Chair, Madam President.
I have the floor.
Hold on, Councilman.
I want somebody to come, tell us, talk to us about this.
You're calling for our parliamentarian?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's on.
He's on.
Mm-hmm. Anthony Bylin and Bill.
Yeah. Anthony Bylin, parliamentarian, I'm present.
Yes, I just want to make sure that what we're doing here is the way that we're supposed to be doing it, because I don't want any members to be regretting or be in the paper tomorrow because we did something we thought that we should have been able to do for, because we've done it that way for the past, you know, two decades or so.
So.
Make sure that, right. So could you tell us if it's the legal process, this is the correct process?
Yeah, my immediate advice on this matter would be, to the extent you'd like a legal opinion on the, I guess, the correct procedure for this process would be to hold this particular invoice for further clarification, then we can provide an exhaustive opinion on the matter. Because, you know, our understanding is, yes, there's this process by which the rules are waived, which that would address, the issue is the council rules, but as to the, you know, overall application of law, you know, from the, from the charter, from, from the city code, we would want to take a closer look at that to be able to provide you an opinion on that point. So we would not be able to provide immediate advice as to whether this is the, you know, the appropriate procedure here. We would advise a hold if you're looking for that sort of opinion.
Okay, I think it's also something we'll address today with our, we have a meeting today. We'll address that too. Thank you.
Sure.
Floor, Madam.
Done. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. There is president. We have done, I'm not saying that we should enter.
That doesn't make it right.
I'm not saying that we should enter into it with a cavalier attitude by any means, but I don't see the reason for a legal opinion. The council is clearly empowered to waive rules to allow for this. Oftentimes, the way this comes over will be in two allocations on the same invoice, so it cannot exceed the final amount. But for the sake of discussion today, brevity and the comfort level of all members, I'll offer the motion to delete this for this week and bring it back for next week.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Line item for the Manchester trade will be deleted. We still have a motion to approve the invoices on the table. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, invoices are approved. The motion, the motion to approve the interdepartmental transfers? Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Departmental transfers are approved. I believe Councilman Burgess would like to make a motion to reconsider.
Yes, can we, if, for a moment, I'm sorry, I was outside the chambers. Do we reconsider Bill two thousand and twenty-two zero one three eight? That's the first bill on our agenda.
There a second to reconsider?
Property bill.
Second.
Okay, second.
Discussion. Seeing, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is now back on our table. Motion, Councilman?
Yes, I want to motion to delete item A, twenty-five fourteen Park Hill. And I can explain if you want me to or not.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item A will be deleted. All those in favor of Bill one thirty-eight, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is now approved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. One new paper.
Skip over P cards?
Yes, skip over P cards. I didn't see them. My apologies. Motion, we need a motion to approve the P cards.
I'm a second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. Need a motion. Now take this to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. One new paper, Bill one fifty-five.
Bill one fifty-five, Resolution Amending Resolution number eight twenty-two, authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with Quick Mid Claims LLC for the provision of EMS billing services to the city.
Motion approved.
Second.
Question? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. One of the first, our first deferred papers, Bill fifty-six.
Bill fifty-six, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Forbes Avenue, laid out in the Associate Congregation Plan, recorded in Plan Book, Volume One, page ninety-five, in the First Ward, six council districts.
Motion to hold one week.
Okay. Question? Question? Why are we holding?
Just asked by the director.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. Bill one oh four?
Bill one oh four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Acting or Acting Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city and through the city's Department of Law to adopt certain settlement terms and enter into a settlement agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway, Manchester Citizens Corporation, Northside Leadership Conference, and Rail Pollution Protection Pittsburgh in order to resolve claims arising from the application of Norfolk Southern Railway Company for approval for reconstruct, to reconstruct the crossing of the North Avenue Brighton Road Bridge docket at the Public Utility Commission and from Northside Leadership Conference, the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission Appeals Docketed at number six eleven CD two thousand and nineteen in the Commonwealth Court.
Motion to approve, brief discussion. Second, like, session, Councilwoman Gross, and then.
Speech to it when the clerk was reading the bill, sorry. So I, we had a executive session last week, and there's also been recent media about this bill, about this agreement. And I want to say how deeply disappointed I am in the Public Utility Commission's decision that basically all of the clearances to allow for double-decker trains will be allowed, right? So that this decision, according to the Post Gazette, is Post Gazette misreporting it? Right, so I was deeply disappointed in the Post Gazette reporting about it, to clarify. And so I, it was not clear to me in the, in the briefing. So, and yet, the bridge on the north side is one of the ones, just to remind, the basic information that we do know as public, that the Norfolk Southern Line travels through the north side and then crosses over the Fort Wayne Bridge near the convention center and enters, that's where it enters my city council district, District Seven. It then continues along what we think of as the east busway kind of valley, but it goes up through there and it crosses underneath the twenty-eighth Street Bridge that goes up into Polish Hill. It's underneath the Harean Avenue Bridge that goes into Polish Hill, and it continues to travel throughout the city. What we know is that those, that the railroad wishes for those bridges to have enough clearance for it to carry double-decker trains. What my constituents have expressed concern about is that it's unclear whether there would also be volatile and explosive freight along that track. So currently Norfolk Southern is running volatile and explosive freight right through the heart of our densely populated city. And so there are safety concerns, and there are certainly concerns about what that can mean and, and what kinds, the lack of, the lack of power that a city has, any city has, under the way federal railroad law is structured. So it has been a long-running concern about both the freight that they're carrying and that they choose not to reroute it as they might around and outside of the city through less densely populated areas. So it's just, I wanted to acknowledge that it's, I'm asked about it monthly from my constituents who live along these tracks. There have been incidents before. Part of Bloomfield was evacuated many, many years ago for a gas that was a toxic gas with a derailment. So, you know, when it's a double-decker train on the south side and it's just toilet paper or mouthwash, it's not something really maybe that citizens are concerned about, but when it's a danger. it's not something really maybe that the citizens are concerned about, but when it's a danger to our citizens, we, we need to continue that conversation. So I'll, I'll leave it there. And again, most of my comments, I think, are what we commonly understand and what my constituents are concerned about.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, I just want to thank the community groups that have been in the mediation and, and have been, you know, really bringing the railroad to the table to get somewhere. This is, um, this is gonna be, you know, this process isn't over. I would like to hold this for three weeks. I'm gonna motion for a hold for three weeks. The reason is I want to be in line with the, with Mayor Ganim. And once we, you know, approve or, you know, if we approve this, I want to make sure that, you know, he's hearing from the public as well. And, you know, in particular, the community groups that have worked on this mediation. I've been working closely with Councilman Vell and, and, and we've been working on this to, to try and make sure that, um, you know, in this, in this difficult situation, it's like a David and Goliath story. And just to make sure that, you know, there's the best outcome in a very terrible situation. So.
Second, and the motion to hold.
Second, yeah, thanks.
Three weeks. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill will be held three weeks. That takes us to new papers, Bill 151.
Bill 151, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 708 Entitled Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Public Works To Apply For Grant Funding From The Pennsylvania Department Of Community And Economic Development Keystone Communities Grant Program To Provide Funding For The Purchase Of Play Equipment In Phillips Park To Accept The Grant And Authorize Necessary Expenditures.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 152?
Bill 152, Resolution Providing For A Reimbursement Agreement With The Pennsylvania Department Of Transportation For Costs Associated With The Construction Phase Of The 30th Street Bridge Preservation Project Providing For The Payment Of Costs Thereof Not To Exceed $2,500,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost of $2,500. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements.
Motion to approve. Second.
Question. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 153?
Bill 153, Resolution Providing For A Reimbursement Agreement With The Norfolk Southern Railway Company For Costs Associated With The Preliminary Engineering Phase Of The South Negley Avenue Bridge Project Providing For The Payment Of Costs Not To Exceed $25,621.
Motion to approve.
Brief discussion?
Question. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Because there has been such kind of scrutiny and interest in the conversation we just had around bridges, vertical clearance in the South Negley Bridge in particular, and, and growing interest in this particular bridge. I just wanted to kind of clarify for the public and allow for representatives from Domi to clarify what this is and what this isn't. So can, can Acting Director Lucas, would you be willing to just help detail what this bill is intended to do? And I see Eric Setzler there as well. Thank you.
Hi, Acting Director Lucas for Domi, and I'm actually gonna pass the mic to our Chief Engineer, Eric Setzler with Domi.
Thank you. Yeah, so this, this bill specifically authorizes the city to enter an agreement with Norfolk Southern. For any, any project that we do that go, that involves the railroad, so, you know, like a bridge that goes over the railroad tracks, we need to have an agreement with the railroad to allow them to review and comment on the plans that we're producing, and ultimately, they have to approve the plans since the bridge goes over their tracks. So this agreement is set up to get, to make that happen, and there is a funding component because they do charge us for that service. So this, this agreement is necessary for the project, and a similar agreement would be necessary on another project that went over railroad tracks.
Just to restate and clarify in different terms, if we're gonna move forward with any kind of repair, renovation, reconstruction, whatever, whatever we end up calling this, that we have no choice but to go through this process and pay this cost to be able to improve the bridge and make sure that it's safe for people to cross over, because it does cross over a Norfolk Southern rail line. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, regardless of any design decisions that come out of it, the agreement is necessary.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify and to make sure that everyone understood that this is not in response to any one thing. This is to move us forward closer to the point where we can start to rehabilitate this bridge.
You. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Land Use And Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, one deferred paper, Bill 65.
Bill 65, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 863 Entitled Adopting And Approving The 2019 CDBG Program By Transferring Remaining Funds From The Jane Street Step Reconstruction Project To The North Side Christian Health Center $76,000 And Traffic Calming $14,220.54.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. One new paper, Bill 160.
Bill 160, Resolution Adopting The Al Qasand Act 537 Special Study.
A motion to approve. Brief discussion. I'll refer to Councilman O'Connor.
Second, thank you. Yes, I know Councilwoman Gross is meeting with some officials from Al Qasand, I believe, maybe tomorrow as well as next week. So this is part of the consent decree, and there are some amendments to it. And this is just part of what Al Qasand has to do through their process. We did hold council briefings on this, I think, a couple of weeks back. So I am going to make a motion to hold for two weeks while those meetings are being done on the Lawrenceville Zoo portion of the project.
Again.
All those in favor to be called, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. That exhausts our Jennifer today regarding our meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, March 15th, and Wednesday, March 16th, respectively. Both meetings will be held at 10:00 a.m. To register as being, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 a.m. the morning of said meeting. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Are there any announcements for members, Madam President?
I just want to remind folks that the St. Patrick's Day Parade is this weekend, and there'll probably be some road closures. So to, you know, watch out for the news releases and from the mayor's office.
The St. Patrick's Day this Saturday?
Anything else? If not, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.